...council meeting to order. Ask that everyone, if you don't have your phones silenced, please do so. First thing is gonna be our call to order. We have our good friend Bishop Slater here is gonna do the prayer for us, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand. And I do want to tell you, as Bishop Slater's coming up, just this past week, we swore his son in as one of our new goals for our police officers. So that was really a pleasure. Gotten to know Bishop Slater through the years, it was really a pleasure to get to do that. So I want you keep your son guided, and we'll do the best on our end, okay? But we appreciate him.
Thank you. Also, before we get started, I wanted to say that I appreciate all that you guys have done, and all that hard work. You can see it within the city. The meeting that you had, joint meeting with the city and the county was awesome, and it's encouraging. Remember, every decision that you make is never about you, it's about us. So in going forward, we're going to pray tonight for a new year with new adventures. Father, we thank you for this great time, Lord, and living in this great city. Father, we ask you, Lord, to cover us and protect us and love us and teach us how to love one another. Help us to be one, help us to be a team, which will come together and accomplish more and more. And Father, tonight, we need you. We need you to cover our minds and cover our hearts. And even as this city grows, God, give us the answers to help every class, every race, every person. Father, we thank you in advance for what you're about to do. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Bishop. Our pledge of allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, next we'll have our roll call.
Mayor Allen.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Goldaway.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Ham.
Here.
Okay, next we have the approval of the minutes from September 5, 2017, and October 16, 2017. For adoption.
Move to adoption.
Second. Any discussion? All favor raised, right hand? Opposed, same? Most secured. All right, next we have presentations. The first one is kind of a really special presentation. I've known this fellow a long, long time. But Jimmy, I'm getting old like you, so I gotta put my glasses on to do this. Resolution expressing appreciation of service rendered by James P. Rowe Jr. as an employee of Goldsboro for more than, I want y'all to hear this, thirty-seven years. Jimmy's one of our longest since serving employees. Whereas Jimmy Rowe retires on January 1, 2018, as planning director with the planning department of the city of Goldsboro for more than thirty-seven years of service. Jimmy began his career on February 20, 1980, as planning technician two with the planning department. On October 24, 1984, Jimmy was promoted to planning technician three with the planning department. On July 3, 1985, Jimmy was promoted to zoning administrator with the planning department. April 8, 1998, Jimmy was promoted to assistant planning director with the planning department. September 4, 2013, Jimmy was promoted to planning director with the planning department. We have served since his retirement, or until his retirement. Jimmy has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire us on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro of expressing to Jimmy Rowe their deep appreciation and gratitude for service rendered by him to the city over the years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, on the count of number one, we express to Jimmy Rowe our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure at the city council. Number two, we offer Jimmy our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated officially as the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from this, the eighteenth day of 2000 December, September 1917. Offer this for adoption. So move. Second. Any discussion? All persons say aye?
Aye.
Most secured. All right, Jimmy Rowe, come on up. Now, I need to tell y'all about Jimmy. As I said, I've known Jimmy a long time. And even before I was a council member, as a developer and contractor, I worked with Jimmy a lot. And Jimmy has told me nothing in the lot through my lifetime. But when he'd always tell me no, he would always say, he knows the codes up here better than anybody. And he would always know a way that he could help you. He would always, always do everything he could to help you. And he's also, by far, I always say, the best dressed anybody we've had. I don't know. So Jimmy, we can give you this, and we're gonna tell you, we appreciate everything you've done. We're gonna miss you, but we expect you to come back and see us once in a while with that knowledge up there. All right, hold on, I gotta get my camera. Are you gonna take it for me? You got it? All right. Are you smiling?
Yeah.
All right. All right, Anne, come on up here.
This is Row.
Here, you come get in the middle of this. This ain't gonna work. Let me show you on this side. She's gonna act like she had something to do with all that. All right, you wanna talk first, or you wanna stop? You wanna talk first?
I'll let Jimmy close this out, that's all right. There you are with that, Jimmy. I don't have a long list to say. I will tell you, I've worked with Jimmy six and a half years. I've worked with him much more closely these last three-plus years. Jimmy's a quiet, natured fellow. The public recognition, he does not really appreciate. He certainly deserves it, but he really is not one of those that wants to be in the limelight. He's dependable. He's here early, he's here late. Somebody closes up the building, Jimmy's one of those looking after us and making sure things are taken care of here. He's good natured. He has a sense of humor. He'll come out once in a while, so that's been fun to get to know. And as the mayor said, he knows the rules. And part of that thing of being the enforcer is working with the development community. And I know Jimmy has worked, as the mayor said, awfully hard to help the development community understand our rules and get through our rules. And I just want to say, Jimmy, thank you on behalf of myself and other city employees. I do think you're one of those shoes that'll be hard to fill. You've been here long enough, and you know so much that we'll have somebody else as our planning director in the future, but they won't be Jimmy Rowe. It will be somebody that takes time to catch up, and we can't replace the experience and the years of service. And I just want to say, thank you, thank you, thank you, and wish you a long and happy retirement.
First of all, I want to thank Scott for giving me the opportunity to serve as the
planning director. I want to thank the Lord for giving me the abilities that I have, and for giving me the opportunity to work for the city of Goldsboro. I've enjoyed my career with the city of Goldsboro. I've worked with some good people. I've worked with a lot of councilmen, four city managers. And I have to say that I've enjoyed every one of them. I haven't had one problem with one of my managers or either one of the councilmen. So I appreciate everything that you've done. I appreciate the hard work that you do for the city of Goldsboro, and just continue to do what you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Jimmy.
And I appreciate the citizens that have supported me throughout these years. Thank you.
All right, staying on this good, positive note, next will be our Star Award. And who is this? You doing that, Vernon? Good deal.
Good evening again.
Good evening.
The purpose of the Golden Star Award is to recognize city employees for their contribution to the city of Goldsboro. Its primary aim is to award employees for going above and beyond the normal scope of their duties, as well as promoting the organization's values and beliefs of integrity, professionalism, collaboration, and quality of life. The Star evaluation should specifically focus on related outputs and accomplishments in customer service, professionalism, problem solving, quality improvement, teamwork, and community partnership. At this time, I would like for the nominee to come forward to present the November 2017 Star Awards.
Well, this ought to be good.
Oh, it is. It's good. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Dennis Russell. I'm from the public works. Tonight, we're gonna present some Star Awards to some of the best people who've got down in public works. Just a few of them, okay? What they did was, the partnership with the children of Wayne County came out and said that they were gonna start this program where children could go out and touch a truck. And we asked for volunteers, and it was on a Saturday, which meant they had to do it on their own time. We had guys that came in, polished trucks, wiped trucks, and dozers, loaders, that kind of stuff, just so the kids could come and go down it. Now, at ten years old, if I could've got a chance to climb and go down on a load, why didn't I piggyback? So, these guys, these eleven guys, took the time to do that. They waxed them, polished them, chined them, and all of that. And I appreciate the council deciding that they'd get the Star Award.
All right. Well, I do want to take a minute to follow up on that, on the, on what the equipment thing, the partnership, because there were, I mean, as a equipment owner, I see a lot of equipment. There was some neat, the city's got some fine stuff, I'm telling y'all. We got some fine operators. But it really was a good thing. And a lot of these children never see this. It was really great for these children to see it. So let's do the important stuff. Nelson Artis, come on. Hey, Nelson. Ah, you stay right here. Demetrius Cogge.
I'm glad I see one of them now with that name.
Kenford.
Congratulations. Thank you, kid.
Donald Stokes.
Matthew Lane.
Annie Williams-Knee.
Annie, which face you drive?
I don't know, man.
Do you? You the one that screwed messed up my trash can?
I'm about to fall, you the one that...
Jimmy Wilkman.
And Brandon Young.
Thank you, Brandon. All right, so y'all, here's the deal. We gotta get our picture, and we gotta look happy and show a lot of love. And we're gonna have to squeeze in like really tight. Because this is a big, come up here. Come on, everybody come up. Come on, come on.
You're gonna be acting like you like.
Are y'all smiling?
Everybody's smiling.
You're gonna be great, though, you smile.
One more. Got it.
All right, thanks, guys. Thanks so much. Since I'm up here, we got one more. Mr. Wobble, can you join me down here, put this up? Mr. Wobble looks surprised, because he doesn't know about this. But I wanted, in case anybody doesn't know, Mr. Wobble's retiring as our city attorney at the end of the year. And how long have you been associated with the city of Goldsboro?
Just a little seven years.
Just a little seven. That means it's a long time, right? So I just want to read this to you. Appreciation award presented to Jim Wobble in recognition of ten years of dedicated and valued contribution to the city of Goldsboro. In case any of y'all don't know, he said it's a little seven. That's how long his firm's been here. He's actually been our city attorney for the last ten years, appointed. So Jim, we appreciate everything you've done. We're gonna miss you. Do you want to make any comments?
No, I appreciate the honor to work with, that y'all have given me to work with the city. And you've got some fine employees. And I've worked with them. I've walked neighborhoods, getting easements signed at night. And you've got some dedicated people here. I appreciate the opportunity to work with them.
All right, you know the drill.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So that does it for presentations. Next, we have a public hearing, Z1117, Cadill Cook and Wark Properties. Jennifer?
Z1117 is Cadill Cook and Wark Properties. The property is located on the east side of North Berkeley Boulevard between Fallon Boulevard and Northwood Drive. The applicant's requesting a zoning change from Office and Institutional One to Shopping Center Conditional District with site plan approval required prior to development. As you can see on the map, the property is located in the blue hatched area, and it obviously shows the current zoning is O&amp;I One. Surrounding zoning, to the north, you have Office and Institutional One. To the south, R9 and R16 Residential. To the east, R9, R12, R16 Residential. And to the west, R16 Residential. The property is currently vacant woodland. Institutional District Destination has been requested, which if approved, would allow commercial uses subject to development plan approval by the Planning Commission and City Council. The city's comprehensive land use plan designates the front portion of the property for office and institutional uses, and the rear of the property is designated for medium-density residential development. City water and sanitary sewer lines are available to serve the subject property. And the property can be accessed through Wark Circle and Cadill Avenue. It is doubtful that NCDOT would approve any curb cut or access from Berkeley Boulevard. The shopping center zoning exists just south of Hill Drive Circle, Berkeley Commons, and on the other side of Fallon Boulevard to the south, which is currently not developed. This is a map showing the property is currently vacant woodland. At this time, there is no action necessary. The Planning Commission will have a recommendation for councils meeting on January the eighth, 2018. Here are some photos of the property. Any questions?
Any questions, Jennifer? All right, thank you, Jennifer. This is a public hearing requesting a zoning change from Office and Institutional One to Shopping Center Conditional District. Would anybody from the audience like to speak for or against? Would anybody from the audience like to speak? All right, nobody looks like they want to speak? Yes, sir?
My name is David Rouse, and I practice law here in Goldsboro. Office is 123 East Walnut Street. Telephone number is 919-736-2440. I'm here to represent Jackie Warwick and his sister, Dottie Warwick, who have filed this petition for rezoning. Since the five laning of the Berkeley Boulevard out to New Hope Road, the, it has, the property has gained value by virtue of the road and the location of the property, which is above in the family's approval. It's used as an office and institutional property. Property has benefits for, in many ways, developing the property would of course benefit the city, because it would generate more antiflorum taxes and more sales taxes. It would benefit the property owners who abut the road, because it would give them the opportunity to market their property for more value than it's worth now. And would benefit the general public, because they would have more places to shop and a larger variety of items to buy. So we see that there is benefit to all of the people. Now, the petitioners are seeking the property to be rezoned to Shopping Center Conditional at this time, because it is important to them to be able to market the property to potential developers and purchasers, knowing that there would be at least a good chance that the property would be approved for use as a shopping center, and for all of the other uses that are included in the shopping center zoning. With that in mind, they have gone ahead and filed this petition. The zoning they are requesting immediately. At the same time, they are requesting, they're not presenting a site plan tonight, because they don't have a purchaser for the property tonight. But they are seeking also conditional zoning. And the benefit of this zoning would be that if it is granted, then it is still conditional, like it says, that when a purchase for the property is found, and the site sign is submitted, then that will have to come back to the, to the Planning Committee, and also to the City Council for final approval. So it's not that we're asking for, for the unconditional approval tonight, but it would be, I think, to their benefit, certainly, to be able to at least begin negotiations of this property. Any questions? I'll try to answer them if I can. If not, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak? Anybody else like to speak? All right, we're gonna close this public hearing. Our hard-working Planning Commission is in the audience tonight. They heard this. And Jennifer, when do they meet? When do y'all meet?
We're meeting after this meeting, actually.
And you're discussing it after this meeting? So they're meeting after this meeting, and y'all are welcome to go in the meeting. Technically, you're not supposed to say anything when you go in the meeting unless you're asked. I know that's gonna be hard, Miss Sheila, but just try to tone it down. And you're meeting in the room next door, right? All right, well, I wish all our Planning Commission a Merry Christmas, and I thank you for all your hard work this year. And we look forward to you doing extra more hard work next year. All right, thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas. Thank you, guys. And y'all are welcome to go with them, if you'd like. Okay, next, we have our public comment period, and we normally limit speakers to three minutes per speaker. We have had a request from some residents of Hanley Acres to come up and speak about a greenway, or the greenway trail that we're doing behind some of their houses. They have some issues they'd like to talk about. So I would invite anybody from Hanley Acres that wants to speak to come up first. I don't know if y'all have a spokesperson, or if y'all gonna speak. I see fingers pointing, but I don't know who they're pointing at. Well, come on up, please, ma'am. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilperson, and fellow citizen. My name is Marjorie Warwick, and I live on Gloucester Road. I've been asked to be the spokesperson for my neighborhood of Hanley Acres and Spring Valley. I stand before you tonight to express our concerns for the new greenway that is being built and abutting to our yards with an entrance at Gloucester Road. Please be advised that we were not given any information or asked for any input before it began. In fact, we only found out about it a very short time ago, and I appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight to express it. Many of our residents on Gloucester Road are seniors. In fact, practically all of us are seniors. We built our house many years ago. And our very main concern that we have is safety. We are a very close-knit neighborhood. We are, we love each other, we take care of each other, we feel comfortable around each other. But it makes us uneasy to think that those that come into our neighborhood and are not residents will not feel the same way that we do. We're very proud of our neighborhood, and we're afraid that they will not keep it clean and keep it safe. And then another concern that we have is the unwanted gatherings that happen at these parks. There cannot be round-the-clock surveillance, and we know that it cannot be lit throughout the park and the walkways. And the homes that are surrounding the entrance at Gloucester Road, we have had vandalism. And we're just afraid that this would just bring more of it onto us. And then a final concern is the added and unwanted traffic. If there's a walk-in entrance at the end of Gloucester Road, we feel there will be patrons that will come and park their cars along in front of our homes. And this will limit our own access from our driveways, as well as add to the wear and tear of our streets. And this goes back to our original complaint, which is safety, not only for ourselves, but the extra walkers, the joggers, the bikers, the skateboarders, and the strollers. We do not even have sidewalks in Hanley Acres. And therefore, the people are going to be parking their cars, walking to the greenways, down by our drives and walkways, and walking back. And we'll be having to try to drive around them. Now, many of us in Hanley Acres own businesses or have owned businesses, so we've paid private taxes, and we've paid business taxes, and we've asked very little of our city. But tonight, we are asking that you reconsider making Gloucester Road entrance to the greenway that is being built there, because we understand there are gonna be other entrances, and one is off of Wayne Memorial near the hospital. And we just want you to really, really consider what has been done. I thank you for letting us express our opinion.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Before I return comment, is there anybody else from the neighborhood that would like to speak in addition to Ms. Warwick? Just to want to be sure everybody has an opportunity. Yes, sir? Thank you, Ms. Warwick.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Gerard McCall. My wife and I reside at 205 Glen Oak Drive. Gloucester, dead ends. The only way you can go is a right onto Glen Oak. We are the first property after city property on Glen Oak. We're on the left side, the east side. Echoing some of what Ms. Warwick said, a concern about this Stony Creek Greenway, section number one, as I've been able to find out from the Planning Commission report, is basically a greenway to nowhere. There's no access from Wayne Memorial Drive, no access from the greenway that runs behind the Community College, and also the hospital. Across Stony Creek, there's no access across Highway 70. In a discussion last week with a couple members of the Plant Planning Department, Jennifer and Mr. Talton, they, especially, especially Jennifer, indicated that those crossovers were years away. Now, they could not answer the question, well, what's the extent of the greenway here? And they referred me to Mr. Barnard, who I've yet to receive a call from, about the length of the greenway. So the only access is on Gloucester. Now, there is a gate there. The gate's been in place for about ten, fifteen years. Before then, there were lots of parties back on that road. Fortunately, the gate has stopped some of that, for sure. We asked that the gate be locked. We asked that signage be put up, no outlet, no parking. We have a concern that the lot that the city owns on the left side of our property, before you you get to the access, not be considered for a parking lot. Now, it's very, that is a wetland there, okay? And if folks were to access that and they would come to walk, you really can't park on both sides of Gloucester because there wouldn't be enough room for cars to go in both directions. So those are the concerns here. The primary concern in the end is security. There is an opening from that greenway between two properties, the Jones property and the Slowzak property of about 40 feet wide. You walk from the greenway into their backyards. We are the next house over, all right? And there have been break-ins over the years in our yards. In fact, my son, a number of years ago, was singing on our back steps, and at 1:00 in the morning, some guy comes walking out of the woods. So security is a real concern for us, and I thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak from the neighborhood? Anybody else? Okay, well, yes, ma'am.
Just real quickly, I would like you all to provide us with information on the impact of flooding with this greenway being built. There's large reservoirs of water that have been dug out by machinery, that we've got sitting water that we never had before. It looks like the flow of that water is going into the creek when we walked, but we, you know, we need to know the impact. There were seven houses in our neighborhood that were condemned over Matthew, and we need to know as property owner, the impact of this greenway on flooding.
Okay. Good question. Okay, well, I'm going to give you the best response I can, and then the manager can step in where I mess up. But first, I do want you to know that we have had, as a lot of you may or may not know, we have had a long-term greenway plan for many, many years. Nothing has happened, had happened on the greenway plan to speak of until the last three or four years. We really had started pushing a little bit more. So your trail has been on part of our greenway plan forever, ever since it's been, and it's been a trail back there for years, as you, some of you alluded to. It was mainly a sewer easement, and it was mainly only accessed by city employees for, to do stuff on the sewer line. But it was always on our greenway trail. What we have started promoting a lot is connectivity of our greenway trails because as somebody said, we've got several trails starting all the way at Elm Street that don't connect to anywhere. And the best way to get connectivity is get them to a point, and then we go to DOT and say, we've done all we can do, now we need your help with the bridge over Royal, the bridge over 70, or connectivity. For this specific greenway, I can tell you that you can go start at the Family Y, get on the bike trail, come down Harding, come on down New Hope Road on the bike trail, and come all the way through to behind the hospital. There's going to be a creek crossing, a stream crossing over the creek, and you can access this trail from several places beside your neighborhood. We did not do a good job of telling your neighborhood about the trail. I apologize for that. We should have seen that as maybe it could be an issue. I didn't see it, and it got to us so fast because we had some extra money that we could put to a greenway trail, and this was one that was ready, to be quite honest, that it just came up, and everybody thought it was a great idea. We thought the neighborhood was going to think it was cream and sugar and be really happy, okay? So we misjudged that. But I will tell you this, the trail at Gloucester, gosh, that's a tongue twister, the trail is simply for the neighborhood, okay? It's not meant for people to park on. It's, we can put no parking signs up, they can park at the hospital, there's other places they can park. It was simply meant as an addition to your neighborhood for your, for the folks walking in your neighborhood. And I think that's all that we ever meant for that to happen. We don't, we didn't intend for people to come out of the neighborhood and to the neighborhood. I'm not going to say they won't do it. I'm not going to say they won't try. Some of the folks that have spoke to me said y'all have had real good response from the police. I think what happens is if we pave this greenway trail, or when we pave it, you'll even have better response from the police because they can go down there, they have a lot more access to it. The gate will stay there, the gate will be shut at all times unless we're there. I think I'm correct in telling you, after 11:00 o'clock at night, our...
It's supposed to be out there after dark.
Oh, it says dark, it's not even 11:00. So I will tell you, after dark, people aren't supposed to be using the trail. So if you see somebody using the trail, call the police. I mean, you just need to do that. And what I will tell you, we will, now that we know the concern, we will monitor it. You all know us, each one of you sitting out there knows one of us sitting up here, so call us, and we'll work together with you to make this as amiable as we can. Hopefully, at the end of the day, this is a great quality-of-life addition for y'all and for our city. So I ask you to have a little patience with us, you work with us. If there are problems, let us know that there are problems, and we will work to do what we can to resolve them. And I just want to be sure, as far as the flooding, I don't, I mean, nothing's going to change, you know, we're snagging the creek right now. The ditches you're talking about were just ditches that our public works folks put in to keep the water where they could, really, before, they couldn't even access the trail for most of the part, so they put the ditches trying to keep the trail dry enough that they could access the trail with equipment. Because as you know, it is very much in wetlands. I want to go through my list. So flooding, I don't think it's going to have an impact one way or the other. I think that if we have a flood, that area's going to flood, and I don't care what anybody does, it's going to flood. The signage, I just want, the gates are going to be locked. We don't want people parking in the neighborhood. The other thing I think is important, as y'all know, this does have a trailhead at the hospital, so people can park at the hospital, they're right there on the trail. We will partner with the hospital because they do have security, and they do kind of look at their parking lots and their trails, and we will see. We also have portable cameras. If there gets to be a situation where we need to put a camera out there, we can, we do have the ability to do that. I think that's pretty much everything that I had. Does any other council member want to add to it?
About some lighting, maybe we can get some lighting over there as well, if that's their concern for safety.
There's no power by there, though.
Get some solar lights. Do something.
I don't know.
We can do it.
But it closes at dark, so that's real important for y'all to know, that if you see people out there after dark, call the police. Just feel, please do that. I know we're going to look at trying to put some screening on your property right at the trail where it begins, and so we've talked about doing that and planting some shrubs there, so we've had that conversation. So if you will just live with us, let us see what we get, and if you need to come back, come back, please. That's all I can offer. Anybody else got anything?
I'll just mention the fact that I've spoken with, either in person or on the phone, with a number of residents of Hanley Acres that's in my district, of course, and I know a lot of people out there, and I understand and appreciate your concern. As the mayor said, we're going to relook at this situation. The city manager is involved in the process as well, and try to address those specific concerns that you've mentioned tonight.
Okay. All right. Thank you, folks, on that. So now, we're still under the public comment. Would anybody else in the audience like to speak on any other subject? Anybody from the audience want to speak? Yes, sir.
One small item.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember. Water bill. I received my water bill last Friday, and in addition to the $4.50 stormwater fee, there's a $5 penalty fee. And I was kind of shocked because I had some issues last year where I got three of these late penalty fees, and I decided that rather than having my bank send a check out seven days before it's due, I would move that to 10 days before it's due. And since in November, there was a Thanksgiving holiday, I decided to make it 12 days. So I requested that the bank send the payment on November the 17th. So when I looked to check my banking account, lo and behold, they did send it on the 17th. And when I looked at the date that it was deposited in the bank, December the 7th. So I went down to the water department this morning and showed that to them and, you know, said, this isn't right. And as they did last year when there was those problems, they took the $5 off. But I was also pointing out to them that that seems an extraordinary length of time that this money is sitting out there, not getting into the city's account.
I agree.
And we're losing money on that. And the young lady I spoke with this morning, she suggested that instead of sending it to a post office box in Charlotte, which is where I sent the payments, that instead, I send it to a post office drawer right here in Goldsboro, and they would get it a lot quicker, which I will do from now on. But I'm thinking also about these other residents in the city who may be hit with these $5 late fees because they are doing the same thing, and it's not getting there in time, and they may not even be checking it. So another thing she advised me to do was to bring it to city council's attention because maybe this is an issue because there's a vendor, I believe, that's handling it for us. Maybe we need to have some better controls on this vendor as far as them processing these checks and getting them to us.
Great point. I don't have a great answer, but it's a great point, and we'll certainly, he's listening to what you say, so we'll try to follow up on it and see what we can come up with.
Depends what bank you go with, too.
Excuse me?
It depends which bank, I will tell you that. It's a former banker. Some banks clear them later than others.
Yes, but if you're having a vendor who's, you're sending it to a post office box, they got it. And we need to get that money in.
It's too long.
Absolutely. And if you'd like, I'll give you a copy of the check to show you.
Don't we have, we'll have that, I'm sure. And if you really want to be, you can just direct deposit it to us. We like that even better.
Well, it's almost that way because I just go to the website and ask them to send that amount of money on that particular day. I just moved it up to a longer period of time, thinking that would take care of it. No, it's now up to like 10 days I'm getting late notice.
Well, at least they gave you the $5 back. I was worried you were going to tell me they didn't give you the $5.
Well, I bet we'd have a problem.
We'll check it. Thank you.
Thank you, and I hope you all have a...
You have a Merry Christmas. Anybody else like to speak? Anybody else? All right, we're going to close the public comment period, and we'll move to consent agenda.
Mayor and council, your consent agenda items, we had discussed. They were items D through I. Again, consent agenda items D through I.
Move to adopt.
Any discussion? Roll call vote?
Mayor Allen.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Rose Meehan.
Yes.
Councilmember Logan.
Yes.
Councilmember Broadway.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Councilmember Ainsley.
Yes. All right, the consent agenda is approved. Items requiring individual action, we have none. City manager report?
Mayor and council, I'd like to do as again, thank Jimmy Rowe for his years of service, and then wish everybody a very merry and safe Christmas, so that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Attorney?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, and I hope you have a happy and prosperous new year, and again, I enjoyed working with you all over these years, and I hope to do some more.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right, with that, we move to mayor and councilman reports. I've got a resolution expressing appreciation for more than 16 years of service to Russell Sweet as an employee of the city of Goldsboro. Russell Sweet refers on January 1, 2018, as a utility systems operator with Public Works Department of the city of Goldsboro with more than 16 years of service. Russell began his career on February 28, 2001, as a Labor 1 with the Public Works Department. On September 13, 2003, he was promoted to Labor 2 with the Public Works Department. On December 2, 2009, Russell was promoted to utility system operator within the Public Works Department, where he has served to his retirement. Russell has proven himself to be a dedicated, efficient public servant who has gained the admiration and respect of his fellow workers and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro. Whereas the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro desire, on behalf of themselves, city employees, and the citizens of the city of Goldsboro, of expressing to Russell Sweet our deep appreciation and gratitude for the service rendered by him to the city over these years. Therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the city council of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, that number one, we express to Russell Sweet our deep appreciation and gratitude for the dedicated service rendered during his tenure with the city of Goldsboro. Two, we offer us our very best wishes for success, happiness, prosperity, and good health in his future endeavors. This resolution shall be incorporated to the official minutes of the city of Goldsboro, and shall be in full force and effect from and after this, the 18th day of December 2017. I offer this for adoption. Any discussion? All clear, say aye, or raise your right hand. Pose same. All right. So next, we have council member comments. We'll start with Mr. Williams.
I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, especially to my family and my personal friends and our citizens here.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Rowan? I'd like to thank Mr. Womble for all the years and all the times he's, when we ask him something, he says, if you say this, you're going to be in real trouble. And so I appreciate that, and I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That's all I have, sir.
I'd like to echo Councilman Broadway, wishing Mr. Rowe, Jimmy, and Mr. Womble happy retirement, and we wish you'd come back and visit us and say hello, and I'd like to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Last week, we had our annual employee appreciation day, a breakfast, if you want to call it, at the Paramount Theater, and we had a big turnout, large turnout of employees from the city for that purpose. We also had city business ongoing as usual, so those that were not there. But what I got to see, and I saw last year, was a really group of dedicated professional people that really takes their jobs serious in supporting the needs of the city. You saw evidence of this tonight in the awards to these 10 individuals, and we see it every day, and I hope the citizens of Goldsboro see it as well. They go about their jobs, not seeking recognition, but it's always good to recognize them for the job that they do do. And we had one individual there who had worked for the city for 40 years, surpassing even fine gentlemen here tonight, so. But aside from that, I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and best wishes to your families as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker?
I'd like to express my appreciation to Mr. Womble for being a friend, as well as being our city attorney. Over the last six years, I've come to really appreciate his wisdom and what he's done. And, you know, I can't say enough about Jimmy Rowe. But let me tell you, Jimmy, Ann's already got that list started to do, and it's probably already about that long, so get ready for it. And Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
All right, thank you, sir. Well, with that, I too want to follow suit, and Jimmy, I want to thank you for all your many, many years of service, and like, Gene took it right out of my mouth, I know Ann's got that list going, and I know you're going to have more money because your clothing allowance is going to go down a little bit. But just remember, if you're going to shop, shop local, okay? Anyway, and Mr. Womble, equally, I want to thank you for your years of service to our city and all that you've done, not only for the city of Goldsboro, but for our city itself. You've been very involved, and so we appreciate that. I do want to tell you, it is Christmas time, please, everybody knows this, and do everything you can to help those who are not as fortunate as we are. A lot of need out there, a lot of need out there, so anything we can do to help anybody, still a lot of presence to be bought, anything you can do to shop local really is good for our community and our merchants and our small businesses, so please do that everywhere you can. And I can't be quite without saying this, we have a lot of visitors coming into our community for, over the holidays. Anything we can do to keep this community clean is a good thing. Keep litter in a trash can, don't throw it down. Anything we can do to help keep this community clean will make us look better for all these visitors. With that, I would just wish everybody a happy and safe holiday, and look forward to seeing each and every one of you next year. We adjourn.